The City of Vandalia Council Meeting for Monday, May 16, 2016 is now called to order. We will have a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand in front of the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you have the Council Workshop Minutes of May the 2nd and you also have the Council Meeting Minutes of May the 2nd. Are there any revisions or corrections to be made? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no communication petitions nor awards this evening, nor do we have any public hearings, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if there's someone in the audience who would like to address Counsel, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and give us your Seeing none, we'll go on with the City Manager's Report. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two items this evening. First, an observance of Memorial Day. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 30th. However, the Rec Center will be open from 7 till noon, just the fitness area, the track, and the gymnasium. And with summer here upon us, Council has adopted a summer schedule where Council will meet the third Monday of each month in June, July, and August. So Council's next meeting is going to be, what is it, it's going to be on Monday, June 20th. The meeting will start at 6:30, and our workshop will begin at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. We have actual items, the extension of time for Foxfire Sections 5, 6, and 7. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, the developer of Foxfire subdivision has requested a one-year extension of time until June 16 of 2017 for the construction of sidewalks on 12 undeveloped lots within the subdivision. They have developed four lots over the past year.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Is my mic on? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for extension of time for Foxfire Sections 5, 6, and 7. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Councilman Herbst, so we do approve the extension of time for Foxfire Sections 5, 6, and 7. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. We have no old business this evening, and that brings us to our resolutions. And our first resolution is 16-R-46. Mr. McDonald, by title only, please.
Resolution 16-R-46, a resolution to enter into an agreement for stop-loss coverage with Standard Life Insurance Company.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. City Council reviewed the proposed healthcare renewal at your May 2 study session. This resolution does authorize an agreement with Standard Life Insurance Company for stop-loss coverage related to the city's self-insured health insurance coverage. The city's plan year runs from July 1 to June 30 each year. The city's total maximum cost under this agreement is estimated at $2,416,431.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 16-R-46.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-46. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Resolution 16-R-47, by title only, please.
A resolution awarding the bid for the Greenhurst Drive and Helkey Road water main replacement project requested by the Public Works Department to Strom Construction, Inc. at the lowest and best bid price of $245,936.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 16-R-47.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-47. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. Resolution 16-R-48, by title only?
16-R-48, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of Type 1 traffic paint at quantities and unit prices as shown in Exhibit A requested by the Public Works Department from MDS Solutions, Inc. in the amount of the State of Ohio bid price of $13,552.15.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Actually, there's nothing additional to add on this item.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 16-R-48 as presented. Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Gerhardt, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-48 as presented. Questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Resolution 16-R-49, by title?
16-R-49, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an addendum agreement to the full-service street lighting agreement with Miami Valley Lighting in order to convert certain streetlights to more energy-efficient lighting.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Back in December of last year, Council adopted a resolution that authorized a street lighting agreement with Miami Valley Lighting. Council subsequently discussed the requirement to convert the existing mercury vapor streetlights to either high-pressure sodium or LED. Council ultimately resolved to convert all mercury vapor streetlights and certain high-pressure sodium lights within our residential areas to LED. Again, this will just confirm with Miami Valley Lighting our intent to do that.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 16-R-49.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-49. Once again, any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. Resolution 16-R-50, by title only, please.
16-R-50, a resolution authorizing amendment to the contract for professional audit services with Plattenberg &amp; Associates.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. The State of Ohio, or I'm sorry, the Auditor of State is requiring a modification to the city's agreement with its auditing firm to include testing of the collection and distribution of income taxes that are related to the city's income tax collection agreements, as well as additional testing of various controls, contributions, and distribution in accordance with new auditing standards. The additional cost for these services is $8,948 over the next two years. The Auditor of State is requiring this modification to be approved by May 31 of this year so that an audit opinion can be rendered by June 30th.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 16-Dash, whoops, R-50, as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-50 as presented. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. Resolution 16-R-51.
16-R-51, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to enter into a State of Ohio license agreement for the multi-agency radio communication system for the Vandalia Water Tower.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. And this non-exclusive license again would allow Marx to attach equipment to the Attica Water Tower and occupy space in the equipment building. And the initial term of this contract is from July 1 of 2016 until June 30 of 2017 for a fee of $20,000 annually. And the license will then renew every two years, beginning July 1 of '17, for a total of 24 years, or as long as the state operates the Mark system.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve 16-R-51 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Herbst, and second by Councilman Gerhardt, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-51 as presented. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. Resolution 16-R-52, by title only, please.
16-R-52, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a letter of understanding with the United States Air and Trade Show.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Annually, the city does enter into a letter of understanding with the U.S. Air and Trade Show. Per the terms of that letter, the city agrees to provide police and city services in support of the veteran Dayton Air Show. That this year will be June 18 and 19, and return, the city will receive one flight line chalet.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 16-R-52 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-52 as presented. Any questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Ordinances for this evening, we have first reading, Ordinance 16-11. Would you read the title by title only, please?
Ordinance 16-11, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the downtown planned unit development for the property located at 34 and 42 East National Road and owned by Noranasa, Pasha, and Carolyn Weinmiller in the Office Service zoning district with a PUD overlay and approving the related record plan.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, a final development plan and plat has been submitted for the construction of a Dunkin' Donuts at the southwest corner of East National Road and Perry Street within the downtown PUD. The proposed development does require the 34 and 42 East National Road to be combined into one lot, creating one 0.40 acre lot. Council was provided a copy of Miss Holloway's staff report, which details the specifics of the proposed development. The planning commission did review this item at its April 26 meeting and voted three to two to recommend approval.
Thank you very much. I know that Mr. Gillian is here. Did you want to address Counsel?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'd like to move that we deny the ordinance approving the major amendment 16-11.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Gerhardt, that we deny Ordinance 16-11. Are there any comments that anybody would like to make?
I would, Your Honor, if you may. I've given this a lot of thought. The issue, or the crux of the issue, is that the underlying zoning, for me, the Office Service District, is a much less intense use than that which is proposed. And I don't believe that the PUD overlay, such as we have used in that downtown area, or any PUD, is worthy of being used when we have to stridently change the zoning that already exists. If we want to change a setback, or the frontage, or maybe work with a particular owner to do some plantings, the placement of a sign, that seems to me the viable use of a PUD overlay, as opposed to changing the underlying zoning. And the balancing here for me was, I realize that the property owners have an interest or a right in doing with their property which they want, and they want to sell it, which is worthy of protecting. I wasn't compelled necessarily by the testimony related to the traffic. I thought the applicant made a pretty good statement that the business is going to be taking from existing traffic. He's not creating traffic that's there, he's getting traffic as it goes by. And I wasn't compelled with the competition issue, which is not really something that's before us with the existing business. People are welcome to continue to patronize that business as they wish. But I do believe that the underlying zoning, because it's less intense and it wasn't really anticipated, doesn't warrant approval through this PUD process. For me, if the applicant, you know, if the underlying zoning at some point gets changed and that's approved, then I would look at the issue differently. However, it exists, and thus my motion tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment?
I do have a comment, that even though this would be, if the vote carries, denied tonight, this would still require a second reading, because our charter requires that all ordinances are to have two readings. So we would have a second reading at our next meeting on this issue.
Anyone else?
I just agree with Councilman Lewis. I know that I've had some sleepless nights, believe it or not, over this, and, again, have not heard compelling evidence to overturn the underlying zoning, and feel in somewhat the same situation, and looking out for the entire city. I agree.
Anyone else? Seeing none, just to remind you, the motion is to deny Ordinance 16-11. And with that, would you please call the roll?
I'm sorry, who made the second? I'm sorry, I didn't have that down.
I did, Mr. Gerhardt.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you very much, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries to deny Ordinance 16-11 with a vote of seven to zero. Our second ordinance this evening is 16-R-12. Oh dear, it's a biggie. By title only, even though it's long.
For the record, I did not write the title. This was bond counsel. Ordinance 16-12, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $4,076,000, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of refunding bonds originally issued by the city for the purpose of paying cost of (a) improving the municipal complex by constructing, equipping, and improving a justice center to house the courts and the police department and related activities, renovating, equipping, and improving the municipal building, constructing relating parking facilities, and acquiring real property and interests therein in connection therewith, all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, and (b) constructing, equipping, and furnishing a municipal community recreation center, including a gymnasium, swimming pool, track, fitness area, lockers, office, and other recreational and related support facilities, all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, and acquiring real property and interests therein in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey, would you like to add to that?
I'd love to.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bond anticipation notes that are related to the 1996 bonds that were issued for the Rec Center, the Justice Center, and the municipal building projects are due to mature on September 8. The notes are scheduled to be retired in 2021, which is when the original bonds would have been retired. The total amount due is $4,893,000 in principal, plus $73,191 in interest. Therefore, the remaining principal balance on the notes will be $4,076,000. The interest rate is estimated at 1.3%, and this ordinance is requested to be adopted as an emergency at your next meeting on June 20.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 16-12 in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve Ordinance 16-R-12 in its first reading. Any comments to that one? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. Ordinance 16-R-13, by title only, please.
16-13, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $2,039,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of acquiring approximately 201 acres of real property bounded generally by U.S. Route 40, Peters Pike, Stone Quarry Road, and Dog Lake Road, in support of economic development and job creation within the city, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. The purchase of land and the construction of infrastructure in Stone Quarry crossings has been financed since 2006 by the issuance of bond anticipation notes that must be renewed annually. The total amount currently due is $2,039,000, plus interest of $30,500. No property has been sold in Stone Quarry since last year, therefore no principal amount is being reduced as part of this renewal. The interest rate on the notes is estimated at 1.5%. The notes are due to be issued August 11. Therefore, Council will be asked to consider this ordinance as an emergency at your June 20 meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Ordinance 16-13 as an emergency, no, pardon me, in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Gerhardt, that we do approve Ordinance 16-R-13 in its first reading. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. Ordinance 16-R-14, Mr. McDonald?
Ordinance 16-14, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $480,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring a fire apparatus, together with all related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. In January of this year, Council authorized the purchase of a new fire rescue engine at a cost of $489,814. The city saved $7,700 in financing costs by paying $233,000 upfront for the cabin chassis. The remaining balance of $249,114 will be paid upon delivery of the engine. In order for the city to affront the cost of the cabin chassis, we did have to temporarily advance money from the general fund to acquire fire equipment fund. The revenue from these notes will be used to reimburse the general fund and also pay the remaining balance of the engine. And upon delivery, the fire engine note issuance will be combined with the renewal of the Rec Center, Justice Center, and municipal building note issuance in order to save money on the issuance cost.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 16-14, its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Ordinance 16-R-14 in its first reading. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. Ordinance 16-R-15, by title only?
Ordinance 16-15, an ordinance authorizing a temporary advance in reimbursement between various funds of the city for expenses relating to the Greenhurst Drive and Helkey Road water main replacement project, together with all related appurtenances thereto.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution authorizes a temporary advance of $15,000 from the general fund to the Community Development Block Grant Fund. The city has been awarded $90,000 in community development block grant funds for the replacement of water mains and also concrete repairs in handicap accessible ramps along Greenhurst and Helkey Road. There are sufficient funds available in the water fund to cover the cost of the water main replacement. However, a temporary advance is necessary to cover the cost of the concrete repairs.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 16-15 in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Ordinance 16-R-15 in its first reading. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. Ordinances in their second reading is, the first one is 16-R-09. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
Ordinance 16-09, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and certain resolutions as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. And this ordinance would codify ordinances and resolutions that have been passed by Council since December 31 of 2014, as well as incorporating amendments to the High Revised Code.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I will open up a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment about this ordinance, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we approve Ordinance 16-10 in its second reading?
Second.
No.
As an emergency?
Oh, nine.
No, no, no.
It's 16:09 as a second reading.
Thank you. Second, okay. It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve our Ordinance 10, or excuse me, 16-R-09 in its second reading. Any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. The second ordinance that we have in its second reading is Ordinance 16-R-10. Mr. McDonald?
Ordinance 16-10, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from Fieldstone Way Construction Fund to the GEO Fund, payment in full of the balance due for the fieldway construction costs, and authorizing the closing of Fieldstone Way Construction Fund, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. The 2016 budget proposed paying off the balance of the bond anticipation notes that were issued in 2015 for the construction of the Fieldstone Way extension. The notes are due June 16 of this year. In order to do so, the remaining $327,868 that are in the Fieldstone Way Construction Fund need to be transferred to the General Obligation Debt Service Fund. Because the notes are due prior to Council's June 20 meeting, emergency action is necessary, and affirmative vote of five members is necessary to pass emergency legislation.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I will open up a public hearing, and if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and give us your comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve Ordinance 16-R-10 in an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhardt, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve. approve ordinance 16-10 in its second reading, and declaring an emergency.
I don't think it's the second reading. Is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I made it.
We're still good.
Okay.
The motion was to pass it as an emergency, so we're still good.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion. Are there any comments?
Nope.
Then would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. We have a variance request, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Corey Folick at 2349 Chevy at Hills Lane is requesting a variance to allow 45% impervious service coverage on his lot, where 35% is the maximum permitted. The lot was originally developed at the maximum lot coverage of 35%. A recently constructed pool was errantly permitted due to a miscalculation, therefore increasing the lot coverage to 38%. This variance request is to permit a 64-square-foot deck with a hot tub and approximately 800 square feet of brick pavers. The BZA reviewed this request at its April 27 meeting and voted three to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we grant the variance at 2349 Chevy at Hills Lane.
Second. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve the variance at 2349 Chevy at Hills Lane. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven to zero. Counsel, you have had available to you the boards and commission minutes for the Goff Advisory Board minutes of October 26, 2015, the Goff Advisory Board minutes of March 21, 2016, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board minutes of March 16, 2016, Planning Commission minutes of March 22, 2016, and Planning Commission minutes of April 26, 2016. Any comments or questions about any of those? Seeing none, I'll report the bill listing for April 2016 as $2,555,594.55. And with that, we will have council comments, beginning with Mr. McDonald. Mr. Cruzey?
I actually have a few items this evening, Your Honor. This is Public Works Week, and as part of this annually, we'll have kids from the local elementary schools visiting the Public Works Department. So this week, St. Christopher will be here this Tuesday from 12:15 to 2:15 at the Public Works Department. On Wednesday, Helkey Elementary will be there in the morning, and Demet Elementary will be there in the afternoon on Wednesday. Senior Carnival Day is at the Rec Center this week, this is for our senior citizens, and that's Tuesday afternoon from 1 to 3. Candace, I'm going to take a little bit of your thunder here, but the Vandelia Butler Chamber of Commerce is hosting an after-hours at the municipal building on Tuesday from 5 to 6:30. The Vandelia Butler High School Art Show is the purpose of that. I'm sure Mrs. Fars may have additional information on that. The Vandelia Butler High School Memorial Program is this Friday at 1:15 at the SAC. The City Shreddit Day and Household Hazardous Waste Disposal Day is this Friday. It's from 9 to noon at the municipal building. And on May 30 at 11:00 p.m. at the Sports Center, Amets Post 99 is hosting the Memorial Day Ceremony. That's all I've got.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll start with council comments with Councilman Herbst.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Ayers?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Gerhard?
No comment.
Councilman Blakesley?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilwoman Fars?
Wow, quiet people tonight. I just wanted to invite everybody on your way out. There are, the Vandelia Butler Senior Art Show is in the lobby and in the conference room as we speak, and it'll be there through May 24. There's nine seniors and 45 pieces of artwork from Butler students on display. The prizes will not be put up until after Senior Awards Night, which is Thursday night, and so the ribbons on the first, second, third, and some honorable mentions are not up yet. Also, since we won't have a council meeting before this date, I don't think, but the opening of the art park for the 2016-17 year is on June 4, which is a Saturday, at 1 o'clock. And they'll be installing eight new sculptures and a new exhibit by a local photographer, Jenny Jackson, called Inspired, and it's going to be very exciting, and hope that you can join everybody out there on Saturday. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis?
None, Your Honor.
And I have none. However, I'm going to ask for a motion for an executive session so that we can discuss the possible sale of real property, proposed economic development project, and potential incentives, and/or infrastructure improvements.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Lewis, and second by Councilwoman Fars, that we adjourn to executive session.
We need to do a roll call vote on that. And since this is to discuss economic incentives, the Highway Vice Code requires that it be unanimous to go into executive session for that purpose. So, just so if anybody wants to veto, you have some power tonight.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.